To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, our nation under God, indivisible, the Lord and just as far.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us. Please let the record reflect that all board members sent Mr. Brady here present. Any announcements? Any members in the public wishing to speak on an agenda? And have a motion for the approval of minutes as contained in your backup. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now is the fun part of every meeting when we do our recognitions, but there is one recognition that we have tonight that is not on the agenda. As many of you may know, Ms. Lozato, after nine years of being on the board, decided not to seek reelection. Now, I say nine years because that's the amount of time that Mike actually spent on the board, but many of you know that he's spent a whole lot of years serving the community beforehand, during coaching, really just worrying about all our kids, whether it was drug awareness and drug prevention, or his obsession with the safety of the buildings, the security of the buildings, and the safety of our kids. You know, I think it's safe to say that Mike has really put a lot of his blood and sweat into this job. So, Mike, we are going to miss you, but it is my pleasure on behalf of the board, although we're going to send him if they want, my pleasure on behalf of the district for thanking you for everything that you've done for the kids and the school district. We are going to miss you. We did make this up, and I'll read it. It says, "Certificate of recognition, Michael Lozato, in honor of your dedication and recognition of your service to the students, faculty, and residents of the West Islip community, 2009 to 2018." Yeah, please, you know, nine years is a long time. It's a lot of service. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lozato. It's been a pleasure.
Okay, so tonight is a very exciting time for us here in the district because it gives us an opportunity to recognize, continue to recognize, the achievements of some of our students. I'm going to invite Dr. Brickman to join me as high school principal. Tonight, we are recognizing our valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of 2018. So, Dr. Brickman, I'll carry over you.
Good evening. On behalf of our high school, of faculty and staff and administrators, it gives me pleasure to introduce to us from class 2018 our salutatorian and valedictorian. We have two great young ladies breaking signs, and they're going to make us proud in this West Islip community. Our salutatorian, Melody Doganite. Melody will be attending Rice University, and she plans to major in chemical and biomolecular engineering. In the future, she would like to work in industry research abroad and tackle environmental issues such as the water crisis, or she would like to work as a professional and conduct research with the university. She's been involved in our school. She was captain of the kick line, participated in brainstormers. She taught Spanish for elementary school students, and she has had many leadership positions in our society. So it gives me pleasure to introduce our salutatorian, Melody Doganite. And to our valedictorian, another strong, outstanding young lady, a very avid reader, Molly McLeodlin. Molly will be attending Yale University with a prospective major in neuroscience for cellular molecular developmental biology. Great stuff. She would like to pursue a career in medicine or public health using a background in science. They sent me the pause in the newspaper to proofread, and this upcoming edition, there's a great quote from her, and I'd like to read it. The question was asked, "How do you feel about being awarded such an honor as a valedictorian?" A response, "It feels great. It's definitely nice to get recognized for all your hard work, but to be honest, I think we place a little too much emphasis on rank and GPA. At the end of the day, what matters most is that you find a college or career that's the right fit. As you leave high school, to me, that's what really represents who you are, not necessarily your class rank." This is a character of the students we have.
And I'm sure Mr. Geller feels the same way, but I'm very excited to be sharing the stage with these young ladies on graduation day, so we look forward to that. End up for you.
Geek power.
Okay, also this evening, every year the town of Islip Department of Arts Recreation and Cultural Affairs recognizes students in a variety of different areas, whether it is the cultural arts, or the liberal arts, or science. And this year, we have nine students from our high school who are recognized at its annual student achievement awards. All of these students were honored for their work in science research. I hope some of you, or most of you, had an opportunity to join us at the symposium a few weeks ago. It is really something special, and I'm so proud to see our science research program growing so exponentially. And we are so impressed by the achievements of the students that have joined us here this evening, and they are very deserving of this recognition by the town of Islip. So with the following students kindly join us in front of the dais to be recognized. Madison Esposito. Julia Grippa. Jamie Hubbard. Shannon Lafferty. Jeff Langhorn. Jack McGee. Nicolette Nyro. Aiden Pecorelli. And Luke Harris. Luke has been placed also in various other science research contests, and Luke actually made it to... Oh, we should message one up.
ISAP.
ISAP, right, in Pennsylvania. He traveled to Pittsburgh a few weeks ago and represented our community so well. So we're so proud of all of you. Congratulations.
Personnel, Mrs. Burns.
So this is usually one of our lengthier agendas of the year, and this year has proven to be... May I have a motion to approve the probationary appointment of John Barrero, psychologist, effective August 29, 2018, to August 28, 2021?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
John Barrero. Congratulations, John. May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Julianne Hayes, psychologist, effective August 29, 2018, to August 28, 2022?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Is Julianne here? May I have a motion for the approval of a leave of absence pursuant to FEMLA, Kristen Timson, reading, effective June 1 through June 15, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a leave of absence pursuant to FEMLA for Toni Marie Young, special education, effective June 5 through June 15, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of regular substitute Dawn Cizudo, elementary, effective June 1, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I am about to read a resolution regarding the abolishment of positions. I'd like to make a note for the record that no teachers are being accessed. These are all positions that are being absorbed through attrition. May it resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, effective June 30, 2018, professional positions in the West Islip Public School District be abolished in the elementary area for full-time positions, social studies area, one full-time position, special education area, one full-time position, and world languages area, one full-time position of classification. May I have a motion?
A move. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a change in title for Joseph Triano, custodial worker 1, effective July 2, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a change in status for Christine Phelps, bus driver, effective July 1, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a change in resignation date for Susan Bobala, senior account clerk, effective June 5, 2018?
A move. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Eileen Magarachi, special education aide, effective June 23, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute clerk Titus Mary McCoffey, effective May 31 through September 7, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the substitute custodians as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the summer school for 2018 personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the region's reduced summer 2018 personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the middle school summer academy 2018 personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the summer investigations program 2018 personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval for the cheerleading summer camp 2018 personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the gymnastics summer camp 2018 personnel as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the wrestling summer camp 2018 personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the boys volleyball summer camp personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the summer recreation camp 2018 personnel as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the summer instructional swim program personnel as listed in the backup?
Discussion? I will be abstaining from the vote on this item, as my son is on the list. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Trisha Plomkin, cultural support summer sports academy 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the athletic trainers for the 2018-19 school year as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the equipment coordinators for the 2018-19 school year as listed in backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the fall 2018 high school coaches as listed in the backup?
Discussion?
That is correct. We are still in the process of hiring new summer positions.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the fall 2018 middle school coaches as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the winter 2018-19 high school coaches as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the early winter 2018-19 middle school coaches as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the late winter 2019 middle school coaches as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the spring 2019 high school coaches as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the spring 2019 middle school coaches as listed?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the permanent substitute teachers as listed in the backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And just as a notation, this has cut down considerably in the amount of time that some of our classes at the elementary and middle school levels have gone uncovered, so it was an excellent, um, thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the district-wide printing services for 2018-19 as listed in the backup?
Discussion? Aye. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Dr. Lu, it's working up.
Thank you. Good evening. So recently, our business advisory committee, which is a committee made up of teachers, administrators, and the transition coordinator along with community members, we met to discuss those future opportunities for our students in career and technical education. We also talked about the STEM Academy and work-based learning opportunities. Ryan Mohl, who is our chairperson of that committee, and also our transition coordinator, updated and reached out to the Chamber of Commerce so that we could form partnerships with the community and relationships so that ultimately our goal will be to have every student that goes through West Islip schools have a student career plan that will reflect both their short and their long-term career goals. And through that committee as well, we have been working on providing an opportunity for our students to read the early childhood education courses at the high school and the opportunity to perhaps with some additional courses and a sequence of pathways that we could provide them with something that's called the CDA, which is the Childhood Development Associate Prudential. And I am very pleased to say that we submitted and aligned ourselves with the Delpa University, and they have accepted not only our family consumer science teacher, Nancy Silverstrini, but also the syllabus, and that we will be able to offer students who take this course college credit and with a pathway so that they could eventually get that credential, which would allow them to leave high school and work in a preschool and be certified to do that, and working with our own students. So this has been a great deal of interest with our students. A little alliance program has been highly successful, and I'm really excited about the opportunities that are there for the students. Today, just before here, coming here, we celebrated our students who have graduated from the alternative high school, got additional and alternative opportunity for students so that they can be successful in high school and have that opportunity for college and career readiness. So it was a great ceremony, and it got some of the direction of Mrs. Morrison and Mrs., I always give her name, Sarah Costa, so I always say that wrong, but thank you very much, Mrs. Burns. And we've got a lot of dedicated teachers, the counselor also involved there, but to see their faces today is just precious. And then, along those lines, I am very excited to tell you that two students who attended Brookhaven Learning Center graduated today, but they also received awards. The first award was presented to Erica McGinnis for outstanding achievement, and the second award was presented to Richard B. Serra for the Work at the Center Award, so we're very excited about that.
Do I have a question about the early childhood support? Yes. Would that then want to expand our high school offering, or is it just the one course that they're taking in early childhood, the Alliance?
So we have, we actually have two courses that will work through the pathway, but along with some, what we're looking to do is expand that so that they can get that credential along with it. We have some other courses, maybe like psychology course, but we will put that together. We have to apply to the firm, that consortium, and then students would just be able to take that and then assess it at the end to get that credential. But they require you to have a course like that and also to do a lot of hours working, actually working with students. And so that gave us an opportunity to kind of expand the hours for our little Alliance program. And we just recently went to their moving up ceremony, and they are ready for kindergarten. They are absolutely ready.
Are you expanding the number of prepaid kids in the kindergarten program, or just expanding the length of time that they're staying?
We expand the length of time. And we are still, I am still pursuing the possibility of universal prepaid. As you know, the difficulty lies in that we need to build a program, pay for it.
Fund it first.
We have to fund it first. So we're still looking into different possibilities.
So again, so for the little Alliance prepaid program, it's a lot of debate, and how many students apply, and how many are getting to that difference? Don't we fall? I'm just curious to know if you can answer that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lu. Mr. McGinnis will discuss the meeting of the finance committee.
Thank you. The committee met this evening in the guidance suite here at the high school. The meeting began at 7:45. Committee members, president, myself, and Mr. Musulak, other board members in attendance, Steve Geller, Kevin O'Connor, administrators present, superintendent Burns, and Wendy Duffy, and other members present, Laura Misalas, Debbie Proctor, and Pat Fontaine. As usual, we reviewed the various financial statements. So we reviewed the Treasury report, Treasury reports for the school district funds for the month of March, and the extracurricular funds for the month of March and April. We reviewed the payroll summary report for the month of March, as well as the financial statements and the claims audit reports for the month of April. We reviewed the system manager audit trail for May 1, 2018, to May 30, 2018, in order. We also reviewed the payroll certification for May 4 and May 18. We received the warrants for the month and discussed several board agenda items, including we reviewed the budget transfers that will be approved later in this meeting, as well as several donations for scholarships. We approved a scholarship from the Suffolk Association of School Business Officials and another $500 scholarship from the Suffolk Association of School Business Officials in honor of Wendy Duffy, the founder. We also received a $500 donation from Justin Scholarship, a $1,000 donation from Suffolk Transportation, and a $200 donation from Islip Superintendent's Honor Scholarship Prizes. We reviewed and approved the change order for PNM Dorsh for $30,587. We also approved the 2018-2019 engagement letters for our auditors, Artis Abrams and Compton, our external auditors, as well as Calum and Danowski, our internal auditors who will perform risk assessments. We also reviewed approval of a contract for 2018-2019 for Omni Services or an extension of the agreement made by the manager for the 3D program, as well as reviewed a series of bar P bids that will be approved, were submitted tonight for approval for the 2018-2019 school year. The meeting ended a few minutes before this meeting at about 8:00.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Mr. O'Connor will discuss the meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Good evening, your light. Buildings and Grounds Committee met this past Tuesday, June 5, at Mr. Horford's, having members present, myself, Mr. Brady, and Mr. Mahalik. Board members in attendance, Mr. Geller and Mr. McGinnis. Administrators present, Mr. Burns and Mr. Bossing. Others in attendance were two representatives from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation who were present only through the beginning of the meeting to discuss the remediation of Lilits Creek. And representatives from Tuva, contractors on the bond project, VBS and SCC Construction, were also present to discuss district bond work. The meeting was called order at 7:30 p.m. The meeting began with a presentation by representatives of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on their proposal to remediate Lilits Creek behind beach middle schools and high schools. The soil and the mud in the creek will be removed for the remediation. Water will be filtered, and soil will then be shipped. The work will require access to and extended time on both the beach middle school and the high school property. It's anticipated that this work will result in the closing of the student parking lot at the high school during the work of the project. The committee had sustained the influence of the remediation project as a health issue to the community, but stressed to DEC that the safety of our students and staff is our priority. Due to the scope of the work of this project, it will take an extended period of time. The exact location of the job sites on the property is still under discussion, but the sites will be fully fenced in, and the committee has requested fencing be at a minimum of eight feet high. The foot bridges for both buildings were discussed, with plans to keep them open and accessible, but restricted to limited times, and tend to be of plans to include some type of supervision of the foot bridges during the times they're open due to the construction work going on back there. The committee has requested, and New York State has agreed, to provide details of this project to all concerned citizens in town in addition to mailings and online information, but most importantly, that Department of Environmental Conservation go hold a public forum to present on this project and take questions from citizens. Once this meeting is scheduled, we will provide information to you regarding the date, time, and location of the meeting. Next, the committee received an update from SCC and VBS on the district bond project work. Phase two of the work is mostly completed with some relatively minor punch items outstanding. Phase three work is set to begin, and to go include, among other things, new roofs for both middle schools, turf installation on Barberry Field and Vosby High School Baseball Field. The new vestibules for the schools were also discussed at the meeting. Plans are set, and work can begin once New York State approves the plans to the 4th elementary and 2rd middle schools. Plans for the high school are now under consideration by the committee. Plans for the high school are now under consideration by the committee. The high school is a much larger job, and as it is larger, it may require more than one vestibule to be considered. In addition to the vestibule work, the committee is also looking to create a new look to the high school front entrance way to give the little grade a higher appeal. Other information provided to the committee included that Joey Wood 5K run is scheduled at the high school for Sunday, July 1st. This is in memory of former student Joseph Wood. The Westbrook Building was recently inspected by fire inspector and no major issues found, and inspection at other district buildings will be done on the week of June 11th, and meeting was adjourned at 10:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. And Mr. Zotto will discuss the meeting of the Safety Committee.
Good evening. Safety and Security Committee meeting, uh, day 16, 2018, 8:30 a.m. at Cole J. Baloo. Uh, security involved, members present were Scott Brady, Bernadette Burns, Anne Ruland, Anthony Bridgman, Tim Moran, Jack Maniscalfo, Dr. Markwick, Lauren Morrison, John Mullins, Andrew Fowler, Ron DePratt, James Boski, and Joey Velosi. A representative we had from Suffolk County Police, actually a representative from Suffolk County Police Department will meet with the administrative team on June 26th to discuss emergency, emergency response plans and plan for building security orders. The committee discussed the benefits of having an outside order depleted as well, and decided to engage the services of A Plus Technologies, which uses Lieutenant Joe McNarrow for this purpose. Additional cameras were discussed to be added to areas of concern throughout the district. A mechanism for noting camera issues has been put into place so problems can be addressed on a timely basis. The committee also discussed the viability of employing armed guards and/or metal protectors. Further study is being required. A lead guard has been hired for the high school to look over and oversee the other guards that are working. Professional development, staff will engage professional development in June and August to address topics such as active shooter, stock of lead, and DASSA, and LGBTQ training. Policy review, practices, the committee recommends that the district go to closed campus model and to work to minimize student drop-offs, which is a particular concern at the high school. Hours for security and paraprofessional to be adjusted to ensure coverage during early morning or afternoon extra help sessions. The salinity side is discussed where the following census on building roofs to discourage visitors, students to wear visible badges during the school day, phones will be glued outside connections near AEDs, that's going to be approved. The purchase of new security vehicles approved, one per year. The meeting is adjourned at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Zotto. Mrs. Morrison will discuss the meeting of the Committee on Special, Preschool Special Education.
Good evening, everyone. The Committee on Preschool Special Education met this morning at the district's office with Ms. Jane Dowling, Dr. Anne Ruland, myself, and Mr. Ryan McGinnis. We reviewed all of the CPSC placements for the month, talked about the status of the Special Education Department, and also talked a little bit about the Veloses' non-graduation because we couldn't use non-graduation with Erica. She didn't want to hear the word graduate. But congratulations to her, that's a very great accomplishment. And the committee adjourned at 30 a.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. Mr. O'Connor will discuss the meeting of the School Board Student Liaison Committee.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of meeting recently with both Beach and Udall Middle School Student Councils, and Ms. Mahalik joined me for both these meetings. On Wednesday, May 30th, we met with the Udall Student Council Officers, their advisors, and Dr. Markwick. Each member of the Council's Executive Committee informed us about different events the student council ran this year, and they did have a very busy year. They attended a leadership conference held at the Sayville Middle School and reported that they found this to be a great experience. At Thanksgiving time, they held a food drive, and in December, they set up a giving tree. Both of these events benefited families from the Udall School home lane. In January, they ran a volleyball tournament and raised $1,200 to the Lionheart Foundation, and the students were quite proud to report that the students once again beat the teachers for what I believe is the seventh year in a row in volleyball tournament. In February, the student council gave every student Udall Valentine as a way to say thank you to the student body for their support of council. In March, they ran an event to put together Easter baskets for the United Cerebral Galsing. They had 95 baskets and also provides a message to the UPC kids by sending tools. One of the council members stated that Japan is to be one of the more rewarding mentions I've had the opportunity to be involved in, and bring joy to the UPC kids clearly touched these students. Lastly, the students were prepared for a pep rally, and eighth graders were very excited at upcoming graduation, and these are just some of the events that Udall Student Council participated in. On Wednesday, June 6th, Paul and I met with the Beach Street Student Council and their advisors. Like the Udall Council members, the students at Beach showed great interest in the operation of the district. The students at Beach also had a very busy year and discussed the many different events they organized and what participated in. They started the year by selling discount cards to the students to help fund events for the Beach Street Council. They organized a clothing drive to benefit the Gerald Ryan Outreach Center. They helped run the pep rallies, ran a talent show, organized both a ping pong and volleyball tournament. They did a breakfast for the Beach Honesty Society, and they purchased t-shirts that came from the fifth graders entering Beach next year. Clearly, the students from both middle schools are very caring and ambitious and represent the district very well. In addition to hearing about all the wonderful projects these students are involved in, Ms. Mahalik and I also used the opportunity to discuss with them the role of the school board. We briefly discussed the budget and its impact on the school and the role of the school board and the trustees. I found the students very receptive and interested in how the district operates. I encouraged the students to stay in both the council and attend school board meetings, and we definitely enjoyed the opportunity to meet the students that left both meetings, very impressed with each young man. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. And since it is his last meeting, we're going to ask Mr. Zotto go do double duty tonight and make his final health and wellness report.
All right. The Health and Wellness Alliance meeting met on Monday, May 21st, 2018. Members present were Tim Moran, Ron DePratt, Julie Canestra, Alina Debo, Arianna Perdini, Chris Kay, Priscilla Olson, Monica Forberty, Kristen Romi, and Ariana Stubbe. We pretty much solidified the color run for Sunday, October 21st, 2018. The committee will coordinate the t-shirts with the sponsors, sponsor forms are attached. The online registration will begin in September. Another thing we spoke about is mindfulness update, exploring professional development opportunities for district and staff, also exploring implementing a grade level structured mindfulness program. New old business was an eye generation challenge, eye generation challenges. The committee approved funding to purchase posters, which will attempt to minimize excessive social media use and have them visible in all schools. Also, the committee reviewed the 13 reasons why, the discussions, discussion items and recommend sharing with the community. Committee also discussed new programs such as nutritional, yoga book, and recycling. That's it. A great summer. Thank you, Mr. Zotto.
Okay, financial matters and business items.
Treasury's report, balance in our accounts on February 28th was $46 million, $131,188.74. Balance in our accounts on March 31st was $49 million, $37,186.64. Next guiding is budget transfers. May I have a motion to approve the general fund budget transfers number 3490 and number 3495, and the capital fund budget transfers number 3496 and number 3498?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have several donations for scholarships. $1,000 from the Suffolk Association of School Business Officials, $500 from Justin's, $1,000 from Suffolk Transportation, and $200 from the Islet Town Chief School Administrators. I have a motion to approve the donations.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have several bids and one RFP. The RFP is the Suffolk Transit Services or Transportation, and we have a list of bid approvals. May I have a motion to approve the bids listed in your backup?
Come on. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve change order number one with PNM Doors in the amount
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the 17-18 health service contracts with Jericho School District and Plainage School?
Come on. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion to approve the 18-19 engagement letter with Colin and Janowski's?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And a motion to, motion to approve the 18-19 engagement letter with R.S. Abrams and Company?
Come on. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And a motion to approve the 18-19 contract with Omni Services?
Come on. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Can I have, first of all, I would like to start by expressing our appreciation and really gratitude for the community's continued support of education. We know that we're always cognizant of the fact that, you know, nobody wants to pay higher taxes. I certainly don't ever want to pay higher taxes, but we also know that, you know, it's an investment in our future, and we appreciate tremendously that the community feels the same way. So with that in mind, can I have a motion for the approval of the results of the annual district meeting held on 8/15/2018?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I have a motion for the approval of General Council Services Agreement and Labor Council Services Agreement?
Discussion?
The terms of these agreements with Mr. Bowles are unchanged from this current year.
Anybody have a poll in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I'm going to read a resolution and then ask for the approval. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the West Islip Union Free School District approves a one-time application of weed and poison ivy control herbicide on Bayview Elementary School fence line and field areas, Curdey Elementary School fields, playground areas, Udall Road, Udall Road Middle School athletic field fence lines, West Islip High School turf field perimeter and softball and baseball fields, Clyde at West Islip High School, Beach Street Middle School, and Udall Road Middle School, provided that the application will be made by licensed pesticide applicator, will be scheduled as to not interfere or conflict with any student scheduled activities, and all regulations concerning neighborhood notification will be followed. And I have a motion for the approval. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the stipulation of settlement and release for student aid as contained in your backup? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Geller. As I began the meeting, this is an exciting time of year. Our moving up ceremonies in our elementary and middle schools will be taking place over the next two weeks. I can't believe we are that far along in this school year. Our graduation ceremony will take place on the turf field at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, June 23rd. I have it on good authority, the weather will be perfect because we paid our dues this year. I'd just like to remind everybody, you heard a lot this evening about the summer bond work that will constrain our use of facilities in various places throughout the district. Both middle schools will not be accessible throughout most of the summer. So we will be sending out some information as far as where you would go if you had any questions, or how you would reach the principals or, you know, other people if needed. So if you could just look out for that. Bear in mind that there is a change in schedule for the next few weeks for all of our buildings. The high school goes to their testing schedule starting on Tuesday, regents exams begin, and then our elementary and middle schools have half days on the last week of school. So we did send a letter home via school messenger, so, and it's also been posted on the district website if you did not receive it. And finally, just a reminder that our July meeting will be held at Cole J. Baloo in the auditorium due to the construction here in the auditorium at the high school and in the two middle schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. I believe that Mrs. Morrison wanted to say something about the recent Thirst Gala and golf tournament that, I believe you did.
Okay. I think Mrs. Zotto. Mahalik was also working on it.
Did you want to talk about the golf tournament? Okay.
That as well. The Thirst Project is organizing their first annual golf outing. We just finished up a very exciting time with them. They had a gala, their second annual gala, which was a dinner dance and a celebration of the Thirst Project work here at the high school and throughout the district, really. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but it's somewhere around $100,000 that they've raised over the period of time that they have been in. In fact, it's a wonderful organization here. It engages students in such a positive way. The money that they raise goes towards building wells in underdeveloped nations and providing clean water to the people of those parts of the world, and really amazing stuff that they've done. West Islip High School actually has been recognized by the National Thirst Gala as a community that I think has raised the most amount of money out of any Thirst Project organization in the nation. So they're really, really very successful, in large part to Ms. Nielsen, Milson, Professor Nielsen, who teaches Italian here, who is just, you can't even explain her enthusiasm and her dedication to this cause. So, that being said, there is a golf outing theme organized July 30th at Burden Point Golf Club. The information, I believe, is on the website. If you are a golfer or know a golfer or interested in golfing, please pass that information along. So it is, again, another fundraiser, but also, you know, it's time for the community to come together and do some good work. And Paul, do you want to add?
There's also if you can't play golf that day because maybe you have to work or something, you can just go to the dinner at night. There'll be prizes, raffles, good food, plenty of drink. The other thing was, I was with Mrs. Nielsen the other day, and she let me know from their gala the other day and all the hard work that they've done. Angie Carpenter gave a very nice citation and everything on their behalf of all their hard work.
Thank you. And I'll just add on that in addition, the Thirst Project is actually only one of the humanitarian efforts that go on in the district, especially at the high school, one of many. Mrs. Matthews leads a group that typically go to Guatemala every year with common hope to build homes. Dr. Bee led a group last year back in his homeland, Grenada.
And they're going again, right? They're going again at the end of this year, the heart project, right?
And so, you know, it's, they're really, really worthwhile causes, phenomenal experiences for the kids, and we thank the teachers and the, and the high school for all they do with that. Okay. Any members of the public to speak?
Okay, so, a public at this time is cordially invited to speak, however, please turn your card if you haven't already done so. And as you hopefully all know by now, each person or representative of a group will be allotted three minutes. The timer is up there. Please be respectful of that. Mrs. Hensel?
Everybody, don't stop timing yet. Is there any policy in plan?
We had it in place, this is probably the third one.
Okay, so there's a new thing?
I'm sorry?
So this is a new?
Relatively new.
Yeah, we've been recommending this back, but I don't know that. Okay. That's interesting. It's like a good game, three minutes. Okay. First, I just want to thank Mrs. Zotto for everything you've done for the district. You've been personally very kind to me, and raised any issue, whether it be fearful one or criticism or compliment, we thank you for that. Now I have to talk facts, now I'm nervous. So, a couple of different things I want to mention to you. My son's going to high school next year, and one of the concerns that I've had, certainly concerned from a question, concern, I know the world is very different though I'm always going to high school here. And I totally, as you know, against any kind of bullying, and that's one of the things that I stand for, and that's certified. So when I went to the high school, I was a little concerned and confused as there was a safe space sticker on every door in the high school. Let me explain. And I want this to be Yanni Laurelmo. I really want you to listen carefully to what I'm saying. I definitely totally believe that anybody who is gay, transgender, my special, all those classes should be protected. Okay, I totally agree with you, however, what I'm concerned about is the fact that according to DASSA, okay, all students based on perceived race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic, religion, religious practice, disability, sexual orientation, gender, sex, and so on, all those are protected classes. My concern about having a sticker on the door is not My concern with that having a sticker on the door is not that I don't want those children to be safeguarded. I'm still with kids with acne, kids who are considered popular, kids who are considered in the low popular group, basic status. I believe all children needs to be protected. And when we highlight one group, we are actually being exclusive and not inclusive. And I hope I'm making my point very clearly because I do not want anyone to misinterpret what I'm saying, because that's what we do in this world, we twist what people say and be labelled. But I want to make it very clear that I'm not against anybody on that sticker. But I am concerned as to why and who and what was the decision made to put those stickers up when there's so many children out there being bullied for other reasons that aren't even in the protected classes? That's very important to me. Because that, when children see that, my husband's going to high school, when kids see that, their minds spin differently than ours. They might not be aware of all of unfair justices in our world. Okay? I want every child to feel welcome in this class, and we all know that just because we have a safe space sticker doesn't mean it's safe space. Politically, it's the rule. I'm very frustrated with colleges, that we are having safe space in colleges, that we can't teach children community and kindness, that we actually have to have a safe space in school, because what we're actually doing is giving them false safety, because there is no safe space in the world. We have to give them skills and confidence and belief in something bigger than us, which you know what I believe that is God. Okay, so these are the things that I'm going to actually not even criticize you because I try to think as children think. Okay, one more question. I'm going to go a little bit. Community service, does that start the summer week break or does it start when the kids are getting to night break? Do they start the community service during the summer or do they consider high school students in the summer? Okay. And finally, the other question I had was armed guards, any updates on armed guards? Or we're not going there yet?
We are still in the process of gathering information. As was mentioned earlier, we're going to have, we're having a meeting on June twenty-sixth, I believe, with the consulting company. And, you know, ultimately, we're going to wait till we get this top-down review of the district safety protocol, facilities, et cetera, before we make a decision.
Thank you, Mrs. Geller. Just moving forward, I like seeing the door stickers up on the doors or taken down? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hensel. Mrs. Muller?
My name is Robin Muller, and I'm a mom. I currently have two students in school, and I have three daughters that have graduated. I addressed you last month, my thanks to you for the American Sign Language program. I have a daughter who is a senior. She just received a great scholarship the other night, I believe based on the work she's done with the children in the life skills class at the high school this year. ASL is extremely important to our students. All of the people that they contact in their life where this skill is used. My daughter is completely fluent. She goes to deaf events, she's going to Rochester in the fall, she is planning on becoming an interpreter and going on to be a teacher of deaf. I'm extremely concerned that I have a sixth grader who was not permitted the chance to explore ASL. She had one quarter of Spanish, one quarter of Italian, and then we received a letter that we had to choose which foreign, which world language she was going to study. I don't understand why that is. It seems discriminatory to me against the ASL program. So many children, I think, would engage ASL and really do well. There are some alumni here we were about to hear from who have gone on because of their ASL background from this school. They are speech therapists, audiologists, American Sign Language interpreters. They have incredible careers based on the opportunity that you gave them to learn ASL. And I feel that by not letting the sixth graders at the very beginning be able to be exposed to it, my child was exposed to Spanish and Italian, and I don't know if you can address that for me, why isn't ASL supported?
Well, we haven't offered ASL as a sixth grade exploratory since the two thousand eight, nine school year, actually. You know, there are so many, the purpose of the middle school program is to really let kids dabble in a variety of things. To your point, we, it was never our intention and it is not our intention to eliminate ASL from the curriculum, but we have many, many courses in many areas for which we do not offer exploratory courses in sixth grade. And we look, and this year we did a pretty rigorous, you know, study of what we need to offer at the middle school level in order to make sure that what's parented for high school and high school careers. And there are a lot of things out there, and it's difficult to appeal to every single interest, you know, across a very broad spectrum of children and their families. So we continue to look at that. One of the things I think we all agree on is that next year, when we go through the budget process, we are going to seek to add an elective in ASL for those students who have completed their studies in maybe Spanish or accounting or wish to take ASL as an elective at the high school concurrently as juniors or seniors, so they also have the opportunity to dabble in that.
That's fantastic to hear that. My, I'm just going to go back to the sixth graders. We have world language, and there's three of them that are district golfers, and to have them in school for an entire quarter, two of the three doesn't sit well with me. And I, I have a sixth grader who's going to be in seventh grade next year. I wasn't aware in two thousand eight that it was not here anymore. It makes me really sad, and I want you to know that it's doing a disservice to our students because this has really changed my daughter's life. She, you know, I explained to Mr. Geller privately that when I was in seventh grade and took Spanish all the way through, I took it at college level. When I go to Mexico, I cannot speak with the local people of Mexico. My Spanish is not that good. She goes right into a deaf event, or if she's in the community and someone is signing, she helps them, and it's incredible. It is the most incredible experience for me as a mom that my daughter is fluent in another language because of a program that you have been supporting. And I think it's really important, if you take a look at the sixth graders, that you allow them to explore all four of your languages. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Otto.
Thank you.
Mrs. Harold? Oh, it is? Sorry?
Hi.
Hello.
My name is White Harold. I'm a alumni who has a twenty-sixth degree, and I'm speaking also about the ASL program. Being a student of West Islip's ASL program is an experience unlike any other I've had at this school. I enrolled in the ASL while I entered the seventh grade, but I wish I would have had the opportunity to be exposed to it sooner because the sign language program truly came out so much later than it should have had at the time that we should be offered in the seventh grade. Thanks to the opportunities provided to me by these classes and my teacher's competency, I have a career path. If I didn't have this competency during my junior year at high school, I would not be on track to become a teacher audiologist, and I would not be at Manitow University. This ASL program exposed me to a whole new world that I became very passionate about. I will miss this guidance, I've been granted opportunities, and never lived in that environment. It would be very unwise and misguided for West Islip's program of education to diminish the possible impact that this program can have on the future of West Islip. Just look at the impact it's had on my life. I'm a rising junior at Manitow University, majoring in speech and engineering science and minoring in linguistics, deaf studies, and psychology. Sorry. Going into my freshman year, I even received college credit for the ASL classes I took in high school, which set me ahead in my course studies. And I understand that that has been a misunderstanding that has been communicated to some students when they enter the seventh grade, and I don't think that that's fair. Allowing for this program's enrollment to be limited by limiting the number of students allowed to register for ASL is a very big mistake and should be reconsidered. And I also understand that, I believe, the cap for that ASL classes has been made smaller, and I was just curious to why that is.
That's not true. That's not true.
We do not limit the access to the five.
Okay, well, I just hope you hear me out. It really did change my life, and I am like Miss Muller. Had I been given the opportunity to do it in sixth grade as well, I think I really, really sparked even more inspiration to push myself in my course study entirely with. I would have had opportunities to participate in the deaf community sooner, and I probably would have been able to find my career path sooner than just what I'm preparing to apply to colleges. So, I just wanted to say.
I just want to address two things. First of all, just to reiterate, there are no class size limits in that regard. As a matter of fact, I personally checked the enrollments for the seventh grade for next year in both middle schools, and neither one has reached the class size limit yet. And the kids, of course, as you remember, we send out a notice asking everyone, you know, what's their plan. The second thing is, as far as the colleges go, there are a number of colleges across the country that do not recognize ASL for their college requirement. So I don't know, you know, certainly Hofstra does.
It helps me with my marriage and something like that, my neighbor.
But some of our students have, many of our students have been successful, as you are, and some of our students have had some challenges in having to start a language when they got to college or that will start something here. So, but we do keep that on our radar as well.
Okay. Well, last thing, can I just add one more thing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that enrollment in seventh grade would be a lot higher for ASL if they would be given the opportunity to explore in sixth grade, especially because a lot of people don't quite understand that sign language is a language rooted in its culture and in the deaf community, and it's something that really spoke out to me when I was speaking my language, that set sign language so much higher above the other two languages.
So perhaps what we could do when, next year, when, well, we always look at our exploratories anyway as we go through the process, the budget process, but perhaps next year, when we look at the languages, we could have our language, our middle school language teachers visit the sixth grade classrooms and kind of share a little bit about various languages that are offered in seventh grade.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, sir.
And if I just could add for the alumni that are here, there's a couple of things I do want to share. So this school year, we were really fortunate, we added a fifth level of ASL, so that would help out, so we have that, and it's also a college-bearing course, so to help support that as well.
That's, who level is one-twenty at current? ASL primary?
ASL, yes, one-twenty-one. So that was that fifth level, so we had a number of students get to seal up by their statement. Also, we did it in all the language, we did like a little exploratory with our elementary students. We had our honor students doing that. So that's something new about exposing that elementary students were exposed to all three languages, and we hope to keep expanding. Just for your information.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to jump topically here, but we're, we call them, yes?
I have put in a card to speak about our family meeting at the beginning of the meeting, but now I understand that I have to, yeah, so I may even speak on the topic still.
Sure.
At a level.
Absolutely. Okay, anyway, Mrs. Cassio?
Oh, you can go in order, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Harrow.
So, can I go in at all?
You will definitely have the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, just by calling order with the...
Okay, it's one picture. All talk.
My name is Rochelle Cassio, and that's for you. My son is currently in Miss Abelson's third grade class at Manitow. I come to you tonight not only as a parent, but also as a seasoned educator. Once again, I would like to express to you my concerns about the class size for this current third grade class. My son has a Bible four. When he entered third grade, there were few modifications on his plan. However, this is not the case anymore. In fact, his doctors diagnosed him with anxiety disorder this year. Pinted anxiety, daily morning meltdowns resulted in us removing him from the bus and the before and after-school programs causing a major burden on our family. My son is one, is only one of the many children of this current third grade class that you have heard about. He, along with over twenty percent of this grade, sees the social worker. Besides the half-hour weekly sessions, many students seek out support staff sometimes daily to soothe their breakdowns, anxiety, work on mindful techniques, and to handle other social issues resulting in additional missed classroom time. While even more students miss further instructional classroom time due to pull-out services for reading, math, speech and language, and OT. There are even some that deserve an inclusive classroom setting, yet it is not offered at Manitow. Imagine the anxiety of uprooting your child in fourth grade. Ms. Burns, in your budget, you state the importance of social environment in which all children can learn and succeed. You also state that reading and math is still the best foundation for all students, and I couldn't agree with you more. You, Ms. Burns, you stated the cap for third grade was twenty-four students with a possible ten percent overage, but you said we weren't there yet. However, Miss Abelson's class roster has been at twenty-six all year, so she's been at the ten percent overage the entire year. Ms. Farrar and Ms. Samos' classes started at twenty-five students, so they were at a five percent overage as well. We, as parents and educators, know the importance of early intervention. We know that instilling the love of learning starts now here in the elementary school. Our teachers were spread too thin this year because of the diverse needs of this current class. They had to spend too much time managing the schedules, behaviors, and so on, and in turn, while they made every effort, there was simply, wasn't enough time for them to go, enough of them to go around, and not enough quality teaching time was allowed for them to challenge each of our children to the best of their abilities. Why small classrooms? To set up a positive learning environment where there would be less anxiety, more attention, less behavior problems, and quality time for teachers to challenge and encourage this diverse group of students. Why? Because fair isn't always about getting the same thing. Fair is about getting what you need. Our children need this. I am respectfully asking you to help my son and his classmates. You have the power to change this. The future of these children is in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cassio. I'm actually going to ask Dr. Willen to respond a little bit about some of the data and concerns you may have about the students' achievements, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. But I do want to address a couple of things that you did point out. First of all, we do go through a very, very rigorous budget process that is open to the public, and we do invite the public to participate and speak to the board throughout that process. We have four open work sessions and a public hearing. But also, one of the things that we have been very proactive about is addressing the social, emotional needs. I couldn't agree with you more. Kids live in a very different world than that in which you and I grew up. And this year was the first year that we actually put in full-time social workers in all of our elementary schools. And I'm pleased to say that next year, our middle school will also, both middle schools will also have their own dedicated social worker. This year, they continue to share, and I don't know how, this is a her and it, but, you know, she was a little bit of a superwoman, I think. I did have an opportunity to meet with the third grade teachers, Mrs. Morrison and Mrs. Bella Sabona, and we talked a lot about the needs of the students, and they spoke a lot about the needs as you relate that. And one of the things we know is that we need to support our teachers as far as providing them with the professional development they need to address these new challenges that we're facing, whether it's academic challenges, the changes in instruction and assessment, or whether it's the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of kids. So that's what we're doing. We will spend a little bit more time working on that with our instructional staff next year and provide them with the support they need in that regard. I will tell you that the concerns that you expressed, we hear all of the districts, my colleagues hear it all over, you know, the island. This is, you know, life in two thousand eighteen, which presents special challenges for our kids. But the class sizes at Manitow are commensurate with that. As a matter of fact, I went back and checked the enrollments for this, you know, as we mentioned, we monitor them all the time, and we check them weekly, and I checked them today, and three out of the four elementary schools.
Can I just, just on that, so, because last year, if the cap for third grade was twenty to twenty-four, why did they start with twenty-five?
I don't know, but if I could go back and change it, I would.
But if they were, if they were behind the equal then, and now they haven't, you know, they had all these emotional and social and academic needs that weren't met.
But they have been met, and I'm going to turn then the microphone over to Dr. Willen so she can share that.
Okay, I may have something to share also.
So, Mrs. Burns asked me to kind of drill down into the data that was supplied to her from the teacher.
So, Mrs. Burns asked me to kind of drill down into the data that was supplied to her from the teachers. I actually then went, I actually went through every single class through our universal screener using AIMS Web, and then I asked the classroom teachers to report to me the instructional reading level that they have been working with their students on. So there is, as you mentioned, 76 students on the R and B floor. Okay, so at the time of the screening, there were 76 just with this past, this latest screening. And out of those students, there were eight students that have fall below grade level. So that is taking a math composite or in the reading composite. So the reading composite looks at oral reading fluency, vocabulary, and reading comprehension. The math composite encompasses number sense fluency, number comparison, mental computation, and concepts and applications. So looking at that, to see that, so you see that's about, it's a little over 10% of the student body, which is actually pretty low considering, of course, grade levels, what we see, where, what we see about students needing support. More interesting, though, we're using, you know, we use the Foxesup canal. We use their benchmark system. We use, that's our guided reading program. According to our balanced literacy approach, they asked the students, our teachers, to supply me, and they just sent it to me yesterday or the day before, I'm trying to remember, but they asked them to fill in about their most latest reading levels. Only two students are reported below grade level.
So what was the, how much did they grow this year?
So they grew. They did the rate of improvement was very good. There was, you definitely saw that growth there, so I would attribute that to our teachers because you just don't improve without anything. Because as you know, when you, you know, close on achievement gap, you need to have your rate of improvement to be greater than the years where you've grown. So their rate of improvement, I think they did from the class drop based on it. And again, this was, you know, data.
I was a third grade teacher two years ago, so I did the oral fluency and the AIMS Web and those computations, and that does not, in my eyes, I mean, I don't know how you feel. And again, with all due respect, I don't think that aligns with the common core and the, you know, the intense.
Well, I mean, research shows that oral reading fluency is a direct correlation to reading performance. So it is a quick snapshot, but that's why I'm saying we got, you saw eight out of that number out of all students. I would put more of the money on, in fact, what our teachers are saying is their instructional reading.
Right, well, that's what I mean, is what was their, like, you know, like what they came in with and what they left with is, you know.
Yeah, which is, I think is pretty amazing. I mean, they, I have three students here, and as you count them off, there's only two that are reading below level P, which is, you know, at the end of the third grade, there's a number of students that are way above of the grade level reading.
Ma'am, ma'am, please, give you a chance to speak after if you want, but please don't throw up. Thank you.
Also, what I, you know, just to, so we were looking at that because I know there were some concerns about the social emotional needs in the classroom. I compared that also percentage-wise to our other elementary schools. In some cases, some services may have been a little higher, some, maybe in some areas it's the lowest. It's kind of pretty comparable, of course, to board, about what we're starting seeing throughout the third grades in all elementary schools. So.
So we received in, in October, we, as parents, and I have a copy of this, it was a letter asking the parents to help the teachers because they could not seem to manage the classes. So there were behavioral problems as well. So I have a copy of that, and I can show you that.
From the very beginning, the class is, you know, it had issues in the classroom from the very beginning.
Thank you, Ms. Cassio. Ms. Latuga?
Good evening. Eric Latuga, 1661 Fairfax Avenue. Good evening. My name is Eric Latuga, and my son is currently enrolled in Ms. Abelton's third grade class at Manitowoc with an enrollment of 26 students. I come to you as a parent presenting awareness of the academic, social, and emotional diversity of this current third grade class and the devastating educational experience this year has had on many third graders. We, we as parents are seeking additional support from the district. Through this year's journey, we have acquired a mindfulness of the anomaly of the majority of the students enrolled in this grade. So here we are, addressing the issue of creating an additional fourth grade section for the 2018-2019 school year. Who would have thought this would be such a difficult request? Involving a critical decision on your behalf of our children in experiencing a productive classroom for a positive, a positive learning environment. Your decision will have, will have far-reaching implications for the success of our children's fourth grade year and far beyond. Mrs. Burns, in your email correspondence to the numerous letters you received from our very great parents, you wrote, and I quote, "Enrollment is a fluid process, and we expect to see withdrawals and new registrations throughout the district on a daily basis throughout the summer. I am monitoring this process closely in all buildings for all grade levels and especially the incoming fourth grade at Manitowoc," end quote. Over the course of last summer, there was an oversight of this fluid process turning into a major oil spill of only three sections of third grade. Two sections beginning with 25 students, and the third, throughout the school year, having 26 students. Just to clarify, our children are not just numbers, but they are human beings. This year, the majority of their needs, as well as the teachers', were not fulfilled. So we are now left with an emotional group of children that didn't have the time they needed to master the curriculum, sprinkled with some students who stopped trying and/or others who weren't even engaged. Mrs. Burns, I have stated before through our correspondence over the past few weeks, I am ashamed to say I have watched my son collapse like the twin towers this year. I am here tonight, as many of us are, because we, as parents, are mindful and are holding ourselves accountable, including you and the Board of Ed, for positive change in the future, positive change. You all chose to accept those seats of power, authority, and responsibility for working with our children. Please help our children by establishing a cohesive plan of an additional projected fourth grade section for this diverse group to create a substantial satisfying learning environment where each individual child will be reached and in turn achieve their individual fullest potential. As I stated before, I do have much respect, gratitude, and appreciation for your service, not only to my son, but to all our children that attend the Westside High School District. And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Kristy Corbett, 920 Ocean Avenue. I would like to thank Mrs. Burns and Mr. Geller for acknowledging my letter regarding the many challenges the third grade class at Manitowoc has faced this year. I greatly appreciate you looking into this matter further. However, I'm not sure there is data to capture how many visits to the nurse because my son was just feeling overwhelmed. Or how many days he has said, "I hate school" and couldn't eat breakfast. Or how many times he has gone to or left school covered in hives and a rash that itches so much he can't concentrate. It is absolutely devastating to hear your beautiful, funny, smart child say, "I'm not good at anything." Their self-esteem suffers every time they fail a test. The lessons go much too quickly, and there is no time to review. Once they miss something and feel lost, they check out. It is not surprising to get calls from the teacher saying, "He's just staring out the window." If it's a mid-chapter checkpoint, we are able to spend a significant time studying at home, resulting in a good grade. Our results are often like a roller coaster. As the curriculum has continued to intensify year after year, this only emphasizes the importance of manageable class sizes. Many of our kids don't feel safe at school, physically or emotionally. Kids look to their teacher for direction and protection on a daily basis. Teachers are the most important point of contact for our kids. They take our place from nine to three. Our students are growing up in a world that has no certainty. We need to understand that from an eight-year-old's point of view. It's not so easy for them to discard the bad thoughts, the worries, the feelings of insecurity, and focus on whatever task we want them to. In addition, as my husband, a 20-year-plus veteran of the NYPD, pointed out, no amount of practice can prepare kids for an active shooter. It is unrealistic to expect one teacher to keep 24-plus kids that are already vulnerable, quiet, and calm for any extended period of time. This jeopardizes the safety of everyone, an unbearable thought. I hope you will seriously consider the needs of the whole child in this diverse group. Please ensure that they are set up for great success next year. A smaller class would help in their needs and will establish their love of learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett. Thomas Sella?
Hi, my name is Tina Thomas Sella. I'm here today as a parent and a teacher to share with you some of the reasons a fourth section should be added for the 2018-19 school year at Manitowoc. Unfortunately, my son did not have a great experience this year with 25 students in his class, and he is an above-average student. During the parent-teacher conferences in the fall, my husband and I were very excited to hear that our son was one of the top reading students and one of the top math students in the classroom. The teacher was very proud of him also. What we were not pleased about was that she said since he was one of the top students, he didn't need any small group instruction. She explained that he would be a part of the whole class lesson and then would be on his own. Basically, there was not a time, not enough time for her to meet with all the students in small groups. Every student needs a small group, whether they are below average on grade level or above grade level. My son became bored and began to not care anymore. He was never challenged, and he began to get lower grades. Work eventually became harder for him, and now I'm seeing tough grades that I'm not happy about. My son was overlooked this year because he was on top and didn't need any small group work. This is a real disadvantage to the students that are on top and are never challenged or provided with any modified or differentiated classwork. The rest of the students eventually catch up since the top doesn't make any progress. The gap closes for those students, and that is not acceptable. We should want all of our students to continue making progress. We should want them to excel and grow as learners. We should want our teachers to be the best teachers that they can be by providing each student with the attention and differentiated instruction that they need and that they serve. We need to understand that this is a very unique grouping of students. Besides the very academic levels across the students, there are a lot of social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Many of them do receive therapy through the social worker. This year, they needed to implement multiple whole-class behavior plans to address the needs of the students across the grade level. Higher-level learners do not receive the small group instruction that is needed to continue growth. Higher-level students do not learn the skills that they need to learn at their own academic level. They only learn the skills taught during a whole-class lesson because there is not enough time for anything more. Teachers do not have the time to differentiate. They do not have the time to modify the curriculum for all students in the classroom due to the amount of students and the varied emotional and behavioral needs of the students. No child should ever be forgotten about or left behind, no matter where they are academically. My, my son should not be forgotten about because he is one of the higher-level students in the classroom. He should be given the opportunity to learn new skills and continue to build on his academic foundation. He should not be held back until everyone catches up. Due to the diverse academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of this act, of this group of students, I'm asking you to reconsider opening a fourth section as it will benefit all students. I hope that you really take the time to consider the options for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Beth Yostko?
Good evening, everyone. I'm a Westside High School alumna from the class of 2012. I'm a founding member from the American Sign Language Honor Society that year, and I'm also an alumna of the University of Scranton. I'm representing a group of alumni who have heard and have expressed concerns about the way the American Sign Language program is being treated. And I know we talked about this previously, but I still have some questions. The fact that it's being offered, or other languages are being offered as an exploratory course, and in the past in our district, American Sign Language was also an exploratory course. That's actually how I learned about it as a sixth grader. And even as a fifth grader, we had a sign language teacher visit our classroom and explain and introduce the topic to us. It's, I was really shocked to hear that it's not being treated at the same level as the other languages our students are encouraged to explore. Westside Substudents need to have opportunities to study this language and should not just be permitted, but encouraged to go on this path. And even if we're not saying it directly by not offering it as an exploratory course, you're saying that sign language isn't as valued because, you know, we don't have the time for you to dive into this language, or that we don't see it as important as the language of some verbal communicated language, verbally communicated languages. And we have the framework in place now for students to continue studying it later on in their career and to have the opportunities to take it as a college course while in high school, which is amazing. But if we're not introducing it to them then, it seems as though the hope is that this language kind of fade out and the desire for it amongst our students, well, you know, we could cut a couple of jobs that way. So me and a couple of alumni have, from all over, have come up with testimonies about how the American Sign Language coursework and the educators who promote it here have really made such an impact on us and on our careers. There's over 20 of us written, who have written, and we've gone on to be educators to be speech therapists, to be sign language interpreters. And we learned to network with other school districts as, you know, children going to that events and engaging with our community who service that the ASL Honor Society requires. So I really think it would be so unfortunate to see this family free to have, especially since one of the students that we had and that has been a part of this program for many years just received the Excellence in Teaching Award from the governor. So if you could please take the time to read these testimonies. I only made six copies, but I'll be emailing it to the board early tomorrow morning. And because even though American Sign Language is a nonverbal language, it's not something that will go away quietly. It's very important to this community and to alumni.
I just, I just want to, I just want to comment here, just because, you know, American Sign Language, Mr. Geller and I were actually on the board that approved bringing American Sign Language into the school district. I think we're the only two on this board that were here at the time. And it was proposed to that sitting board then by Dr. Beth Blatt, who at the time also proposed Chinese, right? That board did, that, I mean, that board did not think that that would be a good fit for the community, but welcome ASL was open-gone. Since that time that we've approved that language, we've supported that language in this school district. And I just find it unfortunate that there is this, this cloud over this subject area where, you know, there's this fallacy that we are trying to do away with American Sign Language. There's nothing can be further from the truth here. So, I mean, I just want you to know that. We support it. We will continue to support it.
I also just wanted to emphasize that, you know, I've heard the concern that some colleges don't recognize it as a language, but the foundation set with American Sign Language, you know, it's like learning any other language. It teaches and develops skills, so I.
And we know that, and that's why we were so, you know, enraged and able to embrace it. I know it has helped the population in our school district. My daughter being one, okay, who did not take a spoken language, was a student of ASL, graduated in this year, going to college. The language credit is fine. I know for other students, it's not. It's always different, right? It's all different experiences when it surrounds that language. But, you know, the point I'm trying to make here is that we, as educators and Board of Education, support the whole language department, including ASL, and we'll continue, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay, and I think bringing back that it's a exploratory course would further demonstrate that, you know, because it is something that was successful in the past.
I think, I think more than that, offering it as an elective is, is something that would be new at the high school level, and it would also increase the amount of interest in the course.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Heather Harrington?
Hi, good evening. I don't have a speech ready or anything, I just heard a lot about the Sign Language program and different changes that are occurring. I also graduated in 2012, and I'm actually currently a sign language teacher, this is my second year of teaching, also on a school in Long Island. And I definitely agree about ASL now becoming an elective, since I do teach ninth through twelfth graders. A lot of my twelfth graders have already maybe completed their graduation requirement, you know, are already receiving their advanced degrees diploma in another language and are now taking it as an elective. And surprisingly, a lot of those students are now continuing on with ASL in college, so that's very wonderful. So I would love to see it as an elective. And also, again, with the sixth grade, I think that would definitely enhance the program as well. But it just sends, sends me to hear that there might be potential changes occurring.
Is that that there's changes, right?
Okay.
There's attrition at, at the upper level, when students choose not to pursue it anymore, okay? And again, my daughter would be an example of that, she took it to eleventh grade and then felt that she wanted to pursue other things in the senior year.
So class sizes is basically getting smaller.
Yeah, so, you know, we cannot force them to take it in senior year.
Right.
So the sections become lower, as well as the fact that the school district as a whole is, is experiencing a lower number.
Right, and I guess with that, you know, if, if it was offered in sixth grade, maybe that awareness would be out there. Maybe that's what a lot of people are just trying to see.
Right, but the, the numbers that Mrs. Burns had said, the seventh graders going into ASL next year, there are multiple courses and sections being offered at elementary schools. So those students didn't get, did not get it as exploratory, but know it's available, and because of all the good work that ASL does within the school district and are taking the class in seventh grade, so we're not eliminating anything in seventh grade.
We haven't filled the class either.
Right, because more than one section do you offer in the class?
No, I think there's one section, we've only had one section of each for the last number of years.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to speak since I am a wonderful product.
No, no, thank you. Congratulations on all of your success, right? And Facebook, too, now, I follow you on Facebook, and I'm really impressed by what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll do my best here. Mrs. Artazon?
I do not have a prepared, hi, I'm Mrs. Artazon. I apologize for my little outburst earlier, this is something I'm very passionate about. I am a parent as well as a teacher for over twelve years. I think we need to treat and think about each child as a whole child and not just a data point or a level, being on benchmark, below benchmark. There's so much more than that. I think social, emotional welfare of a child is actually far more important and precedes the academic achievements. So when a child is feeling terrible about themselves, or not able to perform on grade level or with their peers, it actually impacts their performance far worse than anything else. So this kind of just sparked in me when you were talking about the data. And I think one thing to think about is AIMS Web is one measurement. It's used, it's only one measurement. And the let tile that's produced from AIMS Web actually doesn't completely align with the FMP benchmark. So that's something we need to be looking at more importantly as well. Also, I think the next thing to look at is not just the level that they're at, but what growth have they made? Because like Mrs. Thomas Sallow said, my son is an average to above-average student as well, and his teachers have been phenomenal. However, he hasn't made the growth or gains that he should have this year. A lot of his students in second grade came, graduated second grade and were on benchmark or above benchmark. So what growth have they really made this year? We need to ask where, where they were in September and where they are now, and if they've made any gains. I think that that's really, really important, and this kind of presents another issue that I'm very passionate about. I think there's a major lack of a reading and writing program in the district, specifically in the school that my children belong to. Guided reading is shown to be so important and essential in K-2, K-3 strategy groups. My son's teacher, I had a conversation with her a few months ago, he came home and was talking about another, a group of kids that were doing a book club on Chocolate Touch, and I said, "That's my favorite book, I love that. What are you reading?" He was reading a paper, A to Z book, no materials, not enough resources. I called the teacher, I had a conversation with her, and she said, "I only meet with his group once a week." Why? Because he was the higher achieving student, he only got met with once a week. That doesn't support what these children need. Why was he met with once a week? Because there's twenty-five students in the class. There's no way to meet the needs of all the children. So I just, and, and she did start a group with that book, and he did get to read it, I was so happy, and they read another book as well. She's a phenomenal teacher, the demands are put on her, and there's just not enough time in the day to meet the needs of twenty-five, twenty-six children. So I, I really think it's important to reconsider, and, and for the district as a whole to keep class sizes smaller. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, where we will discuss personnel negotiations and litigation. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene to public session in the district office, actually in the Guided Street here in high school, to consider any items for which a vote is required. Any vote that takes place will be public session, of course, and members of public opposition are welcome to rejoin us at that time. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you all for joining us. If we don't see you, have a great summer. Of course, we do have meetings in the summer. As Mrs. Burns said, they will be at the Loop. You're beautiful new auditorium, welcome, very hot.